I have a motion by Clerk Gurley, supported by Trustee Rosio. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Renowned? Motion passes. Per vole minutes. All right. Per vole meeting agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as written.
Was there an improvement in Waste Management's per paege agenda?
I believe...
Data.
I believe we can put them on the public announcements.
Okay.
All right. I have a motion by Clerk Gurley, supported by Trustee Rosio. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Renowned? Motion passes. Per vole minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting 9/8/2025.
I have a motion by Clerk Gurley, supported by Treasurer Sutherland. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Renowned? Motion passes. Public announcements. I believe we have Miss Chantelle Forrest from WM today.
Bring this down a little bit, even though I realistically don't need the microphone. If anyone needs me to repeat anything at any point, please let me know. I had surgery on my mouth last week, so I'm still a little bit tricky on some words. So don't hesitate to say, hey, rewind. But thank you, everyone, for having me here this evening again. As Anthony said, my name is Chantelle Forrest, and I am the Senior County Executive for WM or Waste Management. We've had the privilege of serving Lennox Township in a variety of capacities for quite some time. One of the things that we have coming down the pipeline is a transition to automation. What that looks like is transitioning from use of personal cans, loose bags. I know a lot of folks already utilize a WM cart in some capacity. What we're going to be transitioning to is uniform use of the WM carts. I know some of you may have received some texts on some items over the last month, just kind of informing you of what that change might look like. And there's a few reasons why we are making that change. The first and at the foremost of everything we do is safety of our drivers. The job of a garbage truck driver and a garbage truck helper is certainly a grueling job. We have transitioned to automation with the intention of getting folks off of the back of our trucks because fatalities are very high in our industry, and it's our goal to do everything we can to prevent that. It's also hard finding a lot of help hoins these days to throw up 10 tons of trash. So by reducing our trucks to one-person trucks, we're able to hire from a more diverse pool. We're able to service your community more efficiently. We utilize trucks that are powered by CNG or compressed natural gas, which is actually something that we get in part off of the landfill right down the street, which results in quieter collections for you all as well. And ultimately, the goal is to provide you the most efficient, clean service as quickly as possible, as quietly as possible, and as safely as possible. One of the other benefits of transitioning to carts is obviously cleanliness of the neighborhood and the community. I know with the recycle bins in particular, some folks may not have covers for their 18-gallon recycle bins, or maybe the recycle covers, you can't fit it on because you've got too many milk chugs or whatever that looks like. That material is very light. Gust of wind comes, and it can roll around in the community. So by transitioning to those carts, it's guaranteeing that everything is going to be safely inside the car. It is going to mitigate some of that loose debris. At the end of the day, you know, we don't want to make this transition too quickly. Our goal is to communicate with the community and let you know what is coming down the pipeline. So with that, we are working collaboratively with the township to have discussions about the best ways to communicate with all of you, when it makes the most sense for us to do that. And we appreciate the township's partnership and support in making this transition to ultimately ensure that everyone on our team and all of you all can get home safe every day. I am going to be out in the hallway. If anyone has any questions or concerns about the transition, again, we're still determining what the timeline of that looks like, but I'm happy to sit one on one with you folks, have a conversation, and answer any questions or concerns that you have. Yes, sir?
Is there a specific distance between tractors that the goals that we should keep?
In terms of the two, so a trash and a recycle?
Yes.
Yes. So ideally, we ask for three feet apart. And the reason for that is as we continue to transition to those carts, the vehicles that we'll use will also look a little bit different. They're called automated side loaders, and they have a hydraulic arm that comes up from the side, looks like a big giant claw. It clamps around the cart and tips it inside the hopper. Those claws are definitely a little bit springy, so if your carts are too close together, it might cause damage to one of the carts or impact our ability to service. So the goal is three feet apart. Usually, we say, you know, if you've got a driveway, you can put one on one side, one on the other side, or at least a little bit of distance, just so those arms can wiggle in there.
Why would you get two feet of snow? And that's not a good one. I mean, you're not gonna be able to stop right there, cars like that, unless you do. Unless you're in a shovel, huh, for us?
Yeah, I mean, if we get three feet of snow, I certainly hope that first and foremost, we're assessing the roads and making sure that it's safe to get out on them. But when you get to three feet of snow, I mean, of course, you know, we're just gonna ask that you get the carts to the curb, similar to what you're doing now with your personal cans or your bags, and we're gonna do our best to service them. We know especially with inclement weather, you know, the folks that we have out on the street are gonna do their best to make sure that we're servicing everyone on the day that they're serviced when they should be serviced. That's a great question. Of course, cool. I'll be in the back, but again, feel free to come up and say hi, and we can have a chat.
Thank you.
Thanks, all.
Thank you, Chantelle. All right. Moving on to public comment. Any members of the public who wish to engage in public comment, please go to the podium, state your name and address. There is a three-minute limit.
Good evening. Linda Rosio, 255-89-26-Mile Road. I just have a question. I was looking at the master plan, and it says to encourage the use of pre-application conferences with developers to ensure that all township ordinances and policies are considered at the beginning of a site design. And they said that this is ongoing. And I know Mr. Casson said the developer for 26 Mile Road for the storage facility, campground, et cetera. It's not necessarily a site plan, but that is what they're saying that they would like to put there. So was this ongoing? Because Mr. Casson had said at the planning commission that light industrial does not even include campgrounds or parking for campers, boats, et cetera. So if the developer knew that, why did it even go any further unless he insisted? Or, you know, was the intention of looking to collect money for him to pay to come to a meeting? I mean, or was it a bait and switch? I mean, I'm not quite sure. Also, on the agenda, it has the 2025 holiday office closure proposal. And looking at the holidays, I see that Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve are on a Wednesday, and Christmas Day and New Year's Day are on a Thursday. Just don't work Friday. So I would think that during, I don't know, public announcements, before I came up and spoke, that maybe for true transparency, you would have given us the dates that you're seeking to have off for your holiday break. I think that is over to the public so that we can discuss it from our point of view before you vote on it. Thank you.
Public comment. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. All items listed under this consent agenda are considered routine by the township board and may be enacted by one motion. According to established township meeting rules, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the board or local store requests F prior to the meeting, in which event the chair of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion and consideration under agenda item or equal of approval. The consent agenda shall be by majority vocal. Vote for those present and moving.
The orders and bills for the month of September to October 2nd in the amount of
If there's a discussion of motion, it will be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the orders and bills in the amount of $820,737.55.
I'll support that. I have a motion by Clerk Gurley, supported by the Chair. May Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
Gurley? Aye. Reader?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye. Moreno?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to item 10, new business rezoning request, Lennox Parking Incorporated, parcel number 19-06-31-300-026. Mr. Casson?
Good evening. This request is, came from the applicant to rezone property at 26 Mile Road near Worthman from Ag AG, which is agriculture residential to light industrial. The request was to rezone the property, and they indicated that purpose was for recreational vehicle storage and also a small recreational vehicle campground, and the site plan showed a pool and a clubhouse. The planning commission held a public hearing, the recommending denial of the rezoning request for noncompliance with the proposed master plan, noncompliance with development matters in the area, and the area is mostly flood plain. I believe the applicant is here tonight and would like to address the warning.
All right.
Good evening. My name is Benson DiLorenzo, and I do have properties all over. One of them is a Costco developed on Hall Road, 300 acres. This is one of our developments, but we've done over 100 of these. This property is uniquely positioned on 26 Mile Road. We believe, the same way we believe that Hall Road developed eventually, 26 Mile will change its character to somewhere to how Hall Road has been developed and how 23 Mile Road is now going in that direction. If you're aware, south of the view is no different than Hall Road, where you have Sterling Heights on one side, you have Chesterfield. In the middle, you have New Haven, and you have these little areas between New Haven and Worthman, which is zone agriculture. And north of there is presently zoned residential. So it's like a little island in the middle of an area, which if you go north of there, you got almost 90% of your township already zoned agriculture. So the only little area, it's a small area, about a mile and a half wide, about half a mile deep. So we felt that putting a storage facility there for RVs is the way to go. But at the present time, with the understanding that eventually, as the area develops, they could just drive away, something like a Costco or something of that nature could be built there. But if we build housing there at the present time, and a subdivision which would be allowed under agricultural, I think we can do between 50 and 20 lots. I think that would seal the fate of that piece of property for our. And I don't think that the houses will ever be destroyed to build something new. This proposal is, we don't really have a site plan yet because that was just an idea. At the present time, what we're only asking for, if we don't go to a site plan, if you approve it tonight, we would only ask for the RV storage facility. We would not, we really don't have any intention of building anything for people to stay there at any given time. It would be just something that would come in, and then it would just leave, maybe at the beginning of the season, and then they would park their vehicles, old RVs, and they leave. There would be a minimum on the traffic, and there would not be a lot of activity. At the present time, the customers who will utilize the seasonal vehicle storage lot will be bringing in RV boats and other recreational vehicle into our township on a regular basis. The visit generates incidental spending in fuel, lighting, repair supplies, and other local services that you, your other commercial users could benefit by. This type of sense is not just a storage yard. It draws customers from all over the city, all over the communities. And it's not where people are gonna stay. We plan not to bring in a site plan, anything that people would stay in. It would just be temporary for just a store during the winter or during the off-season. The adjacent zoning at the present time to the north, this property is residential. And to the south, to the east, is master, to the west, it's master planned, commercial, along Worthman, in the corner there. And to the east, it's already zoned industrial. So it's a little, it's a little strip, and it just, it's like an outlier, and it doesn't make any sense that just the whole area up on 26 Mile Road, it just doesn't fit agriculture. With that, I, you can ask me any questions, if you have any and I'm willing to answer them. But a lot of the stuff that was recommended and denied, we could address a site plan. This is just a simple rezoning request.
I have a few things. One, this property is over 8% in a haven flood plain. Two, light industrial surrounded by agricultural doesn't seem to make sense. Three, I've had discussions with the county road, Department of Roads. They plan on advancing the whole road style for 26 Mile. And this is leading up to my question here. Why did you not consult our planner at all? What this is, is essentially spot rezoning for a light industrial, and even though RV park cannot even go there.
It's not an RV park where people stay, it's just a storage facility. They will only be there temporarily.
That'd be a fine draw, but what you submitted, your drawing, includes a clubhouse and a pool.
That was, we submitted just a thought, but we already discussed it with your planner that we're not gonna do that. We were, we were asking tonight if it would make you happy for us to table it and come back without it, because we have no intention of having a clubhouse and a pool and people who stay in there.
So this goes back to my original question, which wasn't answered. Why did you not consult our planner?
I did.
Mr. Casson?
We've had a talk before.
Did you consult him before you submitted this?
There is no communication.
Oh, your mic's out.
No, there was communication.
There is no communication between myself and the applicant prior to the rezoning and submitted it. There was a communication last week after the meeting that they asked to come in and have a scheduled meeting with me on Wednesday. That's when they offered to remove the recreational vehicle, or the campground. Prior to the zoning coming in, I was as shocked as anybody.
No, that's not, we did discuss it prior to that, but maybe he forgot, but I was here at this office with the engineer, Mr. Servant, and we had a meeting in the back room about two months ago. But anyways, it doesn't really matter because we have, we have no intention of ever doing the units where people stay there, only parking, so we can remove them at any time. We, we're not gonna build a clubhouse and a pool. It was just something that we put together just as a discussion piece. And Mr. Casson advised the board, the planning commission, when we were here, not to, not to regard that as just a simple rezoning request. At the present time, it has nothing to do with the site plan, but if you want to tie it together, we can come back with a conditional rezoning, which we would tie it together and bring in a plan that would be acceptable to everybody.
But even that light industrial does not allow for RV storage. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Casson. Mr. Casson?
Sir?
Light industrial does not allow for RV storage. Correct?
It allows for RV storage, but not the campground.
The storage part is allowed.
But this does not conform with current master plan or even the proposed master plan. Is that correct, Mr. Casson?
That's correct.
The, the area right now, the way it's zoned, it's like a little island, and you have zoned a mile away industrial.
But that's over a mile away.
One mile, yes.
You have to look at the surrounding properties.
To the north, and to the east, it's, right now, master plan is, to the east, to the west, that east is master plan, commercial. At the corner, right now, you have a master plan, and I have a master plan, you wanna see it, which is at the present time, and I don't know about the new one, but the old one is, it's got a commercial component on the corner. We're not funding this property. The property abuts at the present time, and your master plan, commercial, shopping centers.
I'm not moving at all. You got a green button. One of the little things we're pressing on.
I'm working on all the property that abuts your property. Your proposal is residential. It's all, this is 26 Mile Road north. But to the side, it's commercial.
There is no commercial whatsoever in that area.
And it's built up all the way down to Edison's Drive.
That's on the opposite side of the road. That's not even normal records on this town. That's the way that you plan in a flood plain.
And there's no further discussion from the board, and I would like to make a motion. microphone.
Yes, Mr. Do you want to add something? My understanding is that you want to take out the 39 spaces that are really for legal use.
Right.
I don't know, how many improvements have, or do we have in that area going on right now?
None.
If Mr. DiLorenzo wants to redo his plan, and naturally, I'm sure that you would consult with our planner on all of this, I don't see a problem with taking this and allowing him the time to redo his plan. Now, I do understand the wetlands that are there, but those really aren't under our jurisdiction. Those are under the jurisdiction of DNR and also Haven, okay? If Mr. DiLorenzo wants to go through the time, the money, that's his prerogative to mitigate that property. By mitigating that property, does that help out our township? Absolutely. It adds tax base. It's no longer wetland, and if it's no longer wetland, it's gonna be taxed at our regular tax rate. So I personally would like to make a motion to table this and have our planner go through it with him.
There is a motion by Trustee Moreno. Is there support for the motion? Speaker, is there support for the motion? Motion is declared dead. I will make a motion to deny the rezoning request from Lennox Parking Incorporated, parcel number 19-06-31-300-026, for agriculture to light industrial due to inconsistency with the existing and proposed Lennox Township master plan.
A second now.
I have a motion by the Chair, supported by Treasurer Sutherland. May Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
Reader?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Moreno?
Nay.
Rosio?
Aye. All right. Motion passes. Moving on to item B, draft master plan, 63-day review request. Mr. Casson?
The draft, excuse me, the draft master plan has been prepared and presented to the planning commission at their last meeting. I requested they review it. Any questions or comments, they provide in writing to the clerk's office. The state also requires that we start a 63-day review period, of which we will notify all surrounding communities and utilities of the master plan being prepared, and it'll be available on our website. We're requesting tonight that you authorize that process.
Just clarification, I believe there was some comments brought up at the last planning commission meeting. Planning commissioners don't have the opportunity to request changes. This is not a bottom-up, correct?
Absolutely. Have it through the 63-day review period, and then after that, we'll schedule a public hearing, and they can make changes up until that public hearing, and they can even table it at that time and make additional changes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there's no further discussion, motion will be in order.
I'll make a motion to receive the draft master plan with the 63 day review period, proposed plan on the township website, and notify surrounding communities, McComb County and utility companies, that the draft plan is available for review on our website.
I'll start, you know. I have a motion by treasurer Sutherland, supported by trustee Rosio, may the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Marino?
Aye.
Gerly?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Item C, fire department turnout gear purchase proposal, Mr. White.
Good evening, each year we replace several pairs of turnout gear at the, at the fire department. Keeps us from kind of having to do it all in one big fell swoop and having all that cost going out at one time. Uh, this year, by not knowing what the price of the pairs might do, we budgeted $15,000 for that possible purchase. It hasn't been above 12 in the past or very close to that. This year there was not much change. Uh, the total price for the request came from the same company that, that provides all of our turnout gear. So everything kind of matches, they have our specifications, what have you, so we don't go on the bid particularly for this because there's one vendor that sells this. The total cost of that this year was $11,580.15. So we're just requesting board approval for that purchase.
I guess we only have one cord here, how come we don't put it out for bid?
Because it's a, it's a single source, so the gear we wear, the same, the, the men and women all wear the same gear that's been specified for years at the department. There's only one manufacturer that makes that particular brand of gear, so to keep everybody in the same gear, uh, there, there is, it's a single source. There, there's not somebody else who sells the same thing that, that we use where. That's common in the, in the fire service for everybody to be in the same, uh, the same piece of turnout protective equipment.
What's the life expectancy of this gear?
You know, um, 10 years, 10 years, like, like the systems he's traveling.
10 years unless we damage it.
Right, unless it's damaged, there's sometimes when something might get a chemical on it, become scorched or burned in a fire, and then has to be repaired, you know, sooner in those situations.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid for replacement for the fire department turnout gear from MES at the cost of $11,580.15, as recommended by public safety director Chuck White.
I'll start.
I have a motion by treasurer, treasurer Sutherland, supported by trustee Marino, may the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Marino?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Gerly?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, moving down to item D, Parks and Recreation Committee employment recommendation, Mr. Graybeal.
Good evening, board. This evening I come forward from the supervisor's office. The township has in fact received the resignation of Jason Walker from the Lennox Township planning. I joked, sorry. There's a current vacancy seat on the Parks and Rec Committee with the term expiring December 31st, 2028. It is recommended that the board consider approval of the nomination of Jason Walker to fill this vacancy, allowing him to continue to contribute to the township's park and rec efforts. With that, I'll bring you back to the board for any questions, comments, or follow the recommendation of the supervisor.
Is Jason Walker aware that he's been nominated?
Yes, he requested, once he resigned from the planning commission, he has to stay on Parks and Recreation. Yeah, I'm sorry, I did skip that second sentence. He has expressed a desire to remain on the Park and Rec Committee, where he has served as a planning commission liaison in the past. We have found him to be a valuable member throughout the township with his involvement. Would appreciate that board support and allowing him to stay in just the Park and Recreation Committee section.
I guess if scheduling is a problem, I think both committees need to be on the lines.
So his work has been pushing international travel out lately. He's able to take one Monday off a year, sorry, not a year, a month, but two Mondays, that's where he starts to get a little conflicted. So he's able to make the Parks and Recreation Committee meetings, but planning commission meetings, he's not able to.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Jason Walker to the Parks and Rec Committee expiring December 31st, 2028.
I'll support that. I have a motion by clerk Gerly, supported by the chairman, may the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Gerly?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Marino?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
All right, moving down to item E, Microsoft Hyper V conversion proposal, Mr. Graybeal.
Good evening, board. This evening you have a document that was sent out with a packet from our IT corporation that we utilize called Centaurus. Uh, Centaurus has brought forward some information to us, and what I'm going to do is kind of give you the Cliff Notes version of this. The system that we're currently utilizing was purchased VMware, and in 2023, they started to discontinue these products. This product is now at end of life completely. Centaurus has notified us that the protection, the perpetual licensing is no longer able to be supported. With that being said, they're offering us a significant reduction of an opportunity. Instead of being in a cloud-based server, this will be a server within our facility that they're able to operate and control. This server, overall, the virtual servers, I'm sorry, excuse me, Hyper V allows a physical server to run multiple virtual servers, each acting like a separate machine, all on the same hardware. This allows a reduction in cost, better use of the hardware, easier backups and recovery systems, so faster setup and scaling. It also keeps the system more reliable and flexible, making IT easier to manage without extra complexity for the team itself. Our monthly fees at a one, so I'll break this down. The overall cost of the server, as you see on your notes that were given to you, I believe it was $2,240. It's pretty good for the number. The breakdown on that actually falls out to a one-time fee of 200 BDR jump server, a $2,040 one-time fee that is deducted from the existing time lag if we choose so. And then a $1 a month fee for monitoring and providing antivirus and anti-ransomware protection for the server. This cost would be added to the monthly agreement totaling the $972 for the year. I will tell you, we have a number of items that are coming to end of life in the next couple, three years. So this is just the beginning of items that we've notified or noticed and been brought forward. But this is the easiest one for us to tackle and acquire at this point in time to keep the township safe from any malware or conditional attacks throughout the virtual service.
It, it says support here has ended six months ago.
Correct.
How come we're just hiding a lot of this?
This is our IT that has been able to provide continuing support. It's the product manufacturer that has stopped their support completely. Our IT has been able to continue to move this forward, trying to find a much better solution at a cheaper number.
Would, would that be from other companies?
That would be from other avenues, other than cloud-based operations. Everybody wants you to go to the cloud for these things. This is actually recommended by them to be inside the facility for secure and protection compared to the cloud-based operation.
See, now, when they, when they talk cloud-based operations, they talk and it being even better than.
They do talk about it being better, but they are able to actually make this tighter and secure because they're able to control this within the system itself.
And, and what a cloud-based.
Cloud-based operation, some of the estimates that they had came back to us was, was well over 15,000. And this is a recommendation from our vetted supplier that we've entrusted our facility to.
So this is going to be an $81 monthly bill?
That is correct.
It will be added to what we already made.
Which would total out to the $972 a year, correct?
And it's life expectancy?
This is an eight-year, eight to nine-year unit, from what they told me.
Okay. I mean, is that what the contract is going to be for eight or nine years? Or is that what?
No, no, what you asked me was what is the life expectancy of the unit itself, correct? The unit itself is eight to nine years. Once that unit dies or is replaced, then you would have a different number for the $81 a month or $72 a month, or that would change once you replace that unit again. Is that clear?
Yeah, I'm not talking about the hardware, I'm talking about the software. We, this is software, right?
And hardware.
We already answered.
Right, but this is also part of that in order to control it, yes.
If there's no further discussion, motion will be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the conversion to Microsoft Hyper V at the cost of $2,240 plus an $81 reoccurring investment for a total of $2,321 at the recommendation of ITAC slash Centaurus.
I'll start with the motion. I have a motion by treasurer Sutherland, supported by trustee Rosio, may the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Marino?
Aye.
Gerly?
All right, item past 2025 holiday office proposal.
Um, the proposal for Lennox Township, board trustees, the treasurer's department will soon begin preparing our 2025 winter tax bills. As part of this process, we have to determine the hours and days that the township offices will be open to accept tax payments during the upcoming Christmas and New Year holiday. I propose that our offices close 5:00 PM on Tuesday, December 23rd, and reopen Monday, January 5th, and it would give, it would provide the staff with two paid time off days, consistent with practices in previous years. So it would be the, to answer your question, on the, the 29th and the 30th. Um, I probably will be here though, but not the staff. I'll still probably go in. Um, approval of the proposal will allow the treasurer's department to finalize winter tax billing. Thank you.
We still have the agreement with North Star Bank to accept tax bills.
First State accepts tax bills, not North Star.
Oh.
It's First, First State Bank and Richmond only.
Okay. That can't be out of the North.
No, and, and yes, and we have the Dropbox available, but I'll just, I'll be here anyways, with or without staff.
The state of Michigan on their website has recommendation or the holidays is covered under the state, which is New Year's Day through Christmas Day and, um, and, you know, it's not a holiday or the day before, but Christmas, New Year's, it's work day in the state level that I feel the township should be saying.
This is just how they've always done it, long before we were on the board.
Right, maybe that's why we should change it.
Well, we, I did change it. I made less days, and it would, although it's different every year because Christmas and New Year's fall on different days.
The 29th, 30th is Monday and Tuesday, which is normal, yeah? For all state agencies in all the research, I think.
Yeah, that's right. McComb County will be open.
Yes, in Chesterfield Township.
And First State Bank and Richmond will be open, and we have a Dropbox, and I'll be here.
Will the doors be unlocked?
Yes.
People can come in and do business with the money made for third.
No, they cannot do business. They can bring me their taxes. Or I can not come in, I mean, it doesn't matter.
If it's a day out, if I don't like one?
Because it's the day after the taxes are due, Mr. Rosio. The taxes are due on December 28th, and that's a Sunday. So if it were me, I'd pay my taxes prior to that on Friday, but a lot of people don't realize until last minute.
So I don't feel that should be your responsibility in one person.
Well, it is.
It, it's been said many times by the people that work here at, there's an abundance of work to do. When I have an abundance of work to do, I set aside a lot of things. Okay? Um, I see these two days as being beneficial for the township because of the taxes and because it's possible that they'll get work caught up. So I'd like to make a motion that we, that our, that our holiday will be from, would that be Wednesday, the 31st to Monday, January 5th? And if I am correct, when is our next meeting for this quarter?
Next meeting should be November 3rd.
No, I'm talking about January's meeting.
We have yet to schedule that.
We have yet to schedule it?
Correct.
Okay.
Calendar for that year is yet to be set.
So Monday would be the 5th, and that would be most logical time, right?
That we have the meeting?
That we have the meeting, right.
Typically.
Typically. Is that going to allow everybody the time taking out two more days to get the agenda done?
The clerk's department is working on the 29th and 30th also to get the meeting set up and to do payroll. So the treasurer's department and the clerk's office will be open.
Okay, so if both of those offices are open, why, why aren't we open to the public?
Because the building department and the assisting department will probably be off. And that's, besides taxes, pretty busy.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not in favor of that. So once again, I'd like to make a motion to, um, work on that Monday and Tuesday. work on that, um, Monday and Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, thirtieth. And then our holiday starts after that.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Trustee Marino, supported by Trustee Rossio, may the deputy clerk please call roll.
Marino?
Aye.
Rossio?
Aye.
Curly?
Nay.
Sutherland?
Nay.
Reader?
Nay. Motion fails two to three. Are there any further motions? Hearing no, we'll move on. This will be considered brought up at the next board meeting. Moving down to item G, twenty twenty-five Christmas tree lighting and drone show proposal, Mr. Graber?
Excuse me, shouldn't that be?
If there's no motion, we cannot proceed on that item.
We, we, we don't proceed, go to table, right? We have to have a motion to table.
If it comes unfinished business, if there is no motion.
Okay.
All right, good evening, Board. This evening, uh, this comes forward for the holiday light show request. Uh, as in we have done in the past, the Supervisor's Office respectfully submits to the Board's consideration for the proposal from the Firefly Drone Shows in the amount of fifteen thousand to provide a drone light show for this year's Lennox Township Tree Lighting Event. Following the success of last year's tree lighting, the Park and Rec Committee has unanimously recommended proceeding with this enhancement to ensure an additional memorable experience for the community as it had experienced last year. As many people have, or as many people have stated, and we've seen in the past, last year we had an overwhelming response to the event that we put together. This evening, the Supervisor's Office requests the Board's approval of this quote, so preparations for the event may proceed without delay. In your packet, you'll see the attachment from Firefly Drone Shows, the same company that has provided service in the past. For a drone light show with over three hundred drones, fifteen-minute process, the date would be scheduled for November twenty-second. Immediately proceeding with the tree lighting program. With that, I'll bring you back to the Board for any questions, comments, or consider a motion.
This is already allocated into budget, correct?
Correct, this is already budgeted.
Is the date of the drone show be November twenty-second?
Yep, same day as tree lighting, which is the day between today, so we can't turn it up or?
So it's a second, is that?
Yes. Man, public comments. Smart. Thank you. If there's no further discussion, I will make a motion to approve Firefly Drone Shows in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars be part of the annual tree lighting event as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Committee.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by the Chair, supported by Treasurer Sutherland, may the deputy clerk please call roll.
Reader?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Rossio?
Aye.
Marino?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
All right, moving on, number eleven, public comment.
Hello, Board. Janet Hartway here. I have a question about what we just, you just approved, fifteen thousand dollars for the drone show. We give, we pay half the fireworks for New Haven's show, which I think we get credit for. Are they paying a half for this? I know you can't answer a question which is kind of stupid. Um, but I'd like to know that, and why aren't they?
Public comment.
Good evening, Dennis A., thirty-nine forty county line. Holiday office closure organizations I've been in. It's always a liberal, take a vacation day or take a personal day for those extra days off. Usually you could do standard, whatever the holiday is. Though I haven't been able to figure out what the personal days, vacation days and all that are uh, on the staff here on a four-day, thirty-hour work week. So very intriguing. Uh, I would consider that you'd have some sort of limited personnel in charge here on a rotating basis, whatever, if that's possible. And we'd have some sort of vacation or personal base being taken off for that. Thank you. Early Rossio, two five five eight nine twenty-six Monroe. I have a question, and these people probably don't want to answer it, but, um, when you get paid holiday pay and then you come in and work during the holiday period, what do you add up to triple time? Yeah, I guess I was right. It's probably double time plus your holiday pay, right? I think that, uh, these people are over the edge here. Something's got to happen.
Public comment. All right, moving down from call to call for the Board. Janet, to answer your question, this isn't a joint event with the village of New Haven. This is solely Lennox Township. So that's why they don't pay half, nor are they interested in paying half.
Then why do we continue to do the fireworks?
That's going to be a topic for discussion for a different day. Mr. Rossio, your comment regarding holiday, that would only apply for just Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve, and New Year's Day in regards to this. That would, they would not get holiday pay if they came and worked the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth.
So it'd be double time instead of triple?
No, it wouldn't even be double time. We are both salaried, so it doesn't matter. And my employee that will come in and her employee that will come in will take their pay that they normally would get for the day, and it's not going to be double time or overtime. And it hasn't been in the past when they've come in and worked, including my deputy who's come in on a day that she wasn't supposed to, to do her time, because she doesn't go over her forty when she does it. So we're not getting double time, triple time, whatever time you want to say. Thank you.
All right, moving down, closed session for confidential attorney-client pending litigation information from the Township Attorney. Chair will accept the motion to enter in closed session. This does have to be a proposal.
I make a motion that we go to closed session at seven twenty-six P M.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Clerk Early, supported by Trustee Marino, may the deputy clerk please call roll.
Curly?
Aye.
Marino?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Rossio?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Ready?
Motion that we go back into regular session at seven forty-six?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Clerk Early, supported by Treasurer Sutherland, may the deputy clerk please call roll.
Curly?
Aye.
Marino?
Aye.
Rossio?
I have to sustain you.
Reader?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
I'd like to also make a motion to follow the advice of the Township Attorney to move forward on the filing of the litigation. I second that.
I have a motion by Clerk Early, supported by Treasurer Sutherland, may the deputy clerk please call roll.
Curly?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Marino?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Rossio?
I have to sustain you.
All right, moving down to adjournment.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn at seven forty-seven P M.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Clerk Early, supported by Trustee Marino, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Proceeding now, we are adjourned.